It is 9:10. May I have a motion to return from executive session?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to return from executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Raise your right hand. All opposed? Madam Secretary?
Five, zero.
Five, zero. Motion carries.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir?
Based on the evidence presented by our city attorney, the evidence presented regarding the qualifications of place five council member, I move that we declare a vacancy on place number five and begin the process to fill that vacancy.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Point of order.
We already have a motion on the floor.
That's exactly what the city charter says, Madam Mayor, is before the vote is taken, the vote can't be taken until the motion has been made and seconded, and that's when the discussion occurs, and in accordance with the charter, we're to allow one minute to individual citizens for comment prior to that vote.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. We'll do that. Please. Ms. O'Piola?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Eric O'Piola, and I represent Councilman Miller. And I'm greatly troubled, as many of the citizens who are here are greatly troubled by the actions this council is proposing to take, to remove Mr. Miller from office without any due process that is rightfully afforded to him under our state and our federal constitutions, to take an action which is beyond the authority of this council to take to try to redefine or pass judgment on a definition of residency which is resigned to the courts to make that decision. The proper procedure, if this council wants to declare a vacancy, would be to go to a district court and get a declaratory judgment that he is in violation of the city charter. You have not done that in this case, and you are acting beyond your authority as a city council to take this action to try to remove a member of this council just because he politically doesn't agree with you. The courts in many cases, Garza versus Garcia, down in Robstown, we had the case Whitmire versus Ellinger, all of these cases, I felt this is not a proper exercise. Thank you.
He can have my minute. He can have my minute.
Please step up and state your message. State your name, please.
My name is Eric Rodriguez. I reside at 1407 B Street, and I'm going to give my minute to Mr. O'Piola.
Mr. Hug, can you do that?
Yes. There is nothing in the charter about ceding your time to another individual. We're kind of blank on that, and there's no procedure that's established.
All right, Mr. O'Piola, we'll grant that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Madam Chairman? Before we start, I would make it two minutes. I would give my minute also for him.
My statement to O'Piola, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council has, the councilman made a motion without presenting any evidence that the council can consider in a public forum as to the qualifications of councilmember Miller for office. We haven't had the opportunity, beyond my speech, to have any public interaction, or frankly, to allow Mr. Miller to present evidence otherwise. When he asked to have his counsel in your executive session, you voted not to allow him to have that privilege. You have not allowed him to present evidence as to his residency. You just have a motion on the floor and a second and are attempting to take a vote on whether or not a vacancy is declared without actually following the due process guarantees that are afforded to Mr. Miller by our state constitution and by our federal constitution. Again, I urge the court, the council, to follow the prior decisions of the Texas Supreme Court and the Courts of Appeals in not taking the action that was proposed by Councilman Tejada. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm sorry, folks. You're my friends, but this is the floor.
Please state your name.
Jim Lohan.
Thank you.
You know, I know, that Mr. Miller's residency has already been validated by the district attorney, by the Texas Rangers, by the Fourth Court of Appeals, and the Secretary of State. What is wrong with you folks that you don't believe the responses and the validation from government entities that have already done this? Thank you.
Any other citizen comment?
Joanne Yuhas, Wilson County. On the agenda, it says, CNA to receive and approve report and recommendations from outside council concerning qualifications of city council members. This is plural. In order to alleviate any concern that one council member was targeted, can you tell us openly and honestly was every council member up there investigated in the same way that Councilman Miller was? Or are you afraid to say? I guess you're afraid to say.
Another comment? Any other comment? Thank you. Please step to the podium.
Thomas Nobles. It's quite evident what's going on in this town. And I think, I don't care what anybody says, but I think it's time to get on Mr. Miller's side and go to the bank and give money and clean the whole city council. It is. People that have bankrupts, people that write hot checks, people that can't pay their taxes, people that deal with drugs, it's wrong.
Anyone else? Thank you. We have a motion on the floor.
And a second.
And a second. Are we ready for the question? Okay? All those in favor? Please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Madam Secretary, the results of the vote, three, two. Three, two, motion carries. Mr. Miller, you may step down.
Madam Mayor, according to the Texas state constitution, because I was duly elected, I was sworn in, and issued a certificate of election, I am in a holdover position until a replacement has either been elected or appointed by this council. I remain as a councilman with all rights and responsibilities as a councilman.
Can we have advice from our special counsel?
Why is there attorney confering with the city's attorney?
So after consultation with the city attorney, it does not appear that the holdover right applies to somebody who's been removed from office?
I'm sorry, you're...
It does not appear that the holdover provision applies to someone who has been removed from office?
Mr. Garza, he's not eligible to sit.
That's correct.
So that means this is the end of this other?
That's correct.
Okay. Please step down, Mr. Miller.
On the advice of counsel, and as I understand the Texas state constitution, Madam Mayor, I'm not going to step down.
Counselwoman, I mean, Mayor Castillo. May I direct?
Yes, please.
Okay. This issue has been directly addressed. I know Councilman Miller has emailed you the Attorney General's opinion that's directly on point on this issue with regard to qualification of members. It has been held that in the event of a question of qualification of members, the holdover office provision does apply. And so unfortunately, he can continue to hold office until his successor is qualified.
He was just deemed unqualified.
That's correct. That's correct.
Madam Mayor, you have the power. You have the authority.
Mr. Miller, one more time, please vacate your seat.
I caution you, Mayor, that you are acting beyond the power of this council.
Excuse me, if Mr. Hug refused himself, whose advice are we taking? If neither one of these lawyers or our city's attorneys...
I'm offering on just legal...
You refuse yourself on the matter, and he says, "So I'm saying whose advice are we supposed to take on this?"
You voted to have your special counsel.
So we voted on him to do an investigation. That's what we voted on.
And counsel. And counsel.
You voted on the twelfth, and it got started on the second. How is that legal? How is that legal?
So two points. Number one is that it appears from reviewing a fourth court of appeals case that the constitutional provision that's relied on by Mr. Miller's attorney, Mr. O'Piola, does not apply to someone who was removed from office. That would be Mr. Miller.
I've been declared ineligible. I'm not being removed.
On the question of whose advice you're going to take, it's true that Mr. Hug has recused himself from the matter of the qualifications of the members of the councils. However, his opinion about the questions about removal and what the law says on those issues seems to me to be valid. And so I've conferred with him, and he and I both agree that this provision that Mr. O'Piola cites isn't applicable in the circumstance that you find yourself in.
Thank you. Chita Vera, please step up and have Mr. Miller vacate the seat.
Mayor Castillo, I caution you that you're acting beyond the color of office to take an action that could be considered oppression of Mr. Miller, and you're not acting under the legal authority, nor would the chief be acting under his legal authority to remove a sitting council member who is in office from...
The whole council just voted him unqualified.
I understand that. I understand that. However, the state constitution says that he continues to hold office until his successor is qualified.
We just heard from the attorney that it's not correct.
We're hearing from another attorney. I'm just saying you're subjecting yourself to judicial...
Madam Mayor, let's move on. We have a long agenda.
Why don't you err on the side of caution? We'll continue with the next item?
Y'all are being very transparent. Y'all being transparent that y'all racist and very unethical.
Officer, please remove Mr. Miller.
Oh, they don't want it filmed.
That would be considered official prejudice law.
The apple.
We're going on to the next item. The next item is a CNA regarding amended council directive number four. Would you like any citizen comments?
Try to stay up.
Period of the city council meetings.
Madam Mayor, would you ask them to silence themselves so we can hear what's going on?
Our beliefs, man. Please take charge of the audience. Thank you.
There will be no more outward palpable rate.
Mr. Hug, would you please address council directive number four?
Thank you, Mayor and City Councilman. Council directive number four was requested to clarify some issues here with the citizen's comments forum. And a little bit of history on this. Council directive number four was initially implemented back in 2012 to provide for a citizen comment period at the beginning of meetings. There's no statutory requirement that there be a citizen's comment period or anything else like that at a meeting. So council directive number four was put in place to allow and to actually mandate that there be such one before every council meeting. There is a charter required, the citizen comment period, that occurs prior to the vote of any CNA item that happens in the city of Florisville. This amended council directive number four is to address what some people had seen as issues with the previous council directive and to clarify some of the wording that's in the charter. And I'll kind of go into that here. To address, we've got the general citizen comments, which is the one to start the meeting, and the charter mandated citizen comments. The general citizen comments, it was discussed about having the discussion related to Florisville being involved with those who vote for the council members of Florisville who pay their property taxes in Florisville and issues like that. This 1.02A implements a "who may comment" in the general citizen comments section, and says, "Any individual who is in attendance at the city council meeting of the city of Florisville and signs in prior to the city council meeting being called to order may address the council during this time, subject to the general public vote." Sign up for this comment period shall require a name and address of record. Citizens who reside within the city limits of Florisville may comment or speak on any topic. Individuals who are not citizens of Florisville may only comment on general issues and those items that directly impact residents outside of the city limits of Florisville. This was done sort of in response to the Roe v. Cocoa Beach, Florida issue that was raised about things that directly impact those individuals they should be allowed to vote on. So if Phelps is going to do a rate increase and comes to the city council for approval of it, obviously, people that live in the county that have Phelps would be allowed. If the city is going to increase water and sewer rates and they're outside the city but use Florisville City Water Utilities, they would be allowed to comment on those. It creates a viewpoint-neutral delineation. It's not if you're not allowed to speak if you're opposed to what council wants to do. You're only allowed to speak if the council approves it. It's just a geographical boundary that is, by definition, viewpoint-neutral. 1.02B addresses the charter mandated citizen comments. And in there, the language of the charter states that individual citizens must be given a minute, should they so desire, to speak on these topics. What it doesn't do is define citizen. Marion Webster, their full definition of citizen is a resident of a town or village. And Florisville can only define citizens by its city limits. We can't define a United States citizen, a Texas citizen. So if the council desires to limit it to residents of the city of Florisville for those one-minute CNA items, I do believe that is in line with the city charter. The issue that was brought up during the citizen comments of allowing the mayor to determine these, is sometimes there is a gray area. And you may not know if it directly or indirectly impacts somebody. We, earlier, I use the water and sewer. That's a very clear delineation. If we do sales tax for some reason in the future, that's something where residents of the county don't live inside the city, but does that have a direct impact? Or can they go to San Antonio to shop or out in the county, things like that? So that would be where the mayor's discretion comes in. We did establish time limits. I know it has not occurred in the past, but there was some concern about the length of time that citizen comments could impact on a meeting, and some of these meetings run a little long sometimes. And so having a two minutes to be able to say, somebody speaks of mine, having an overall time limit of 30 is what was put forth. Obviously, sometimes if there's a really contentious issue or something that people are passionate about, maybe there's 20 people that sign up, and that would exceed, by definition, the two minutes, which would be 40. So that would be, again, the mayor's discretion on whether to allow those extra individuals to speak. Could not pick and choose which individuals get to speak. It would be first come, first served on the list as signed in. The verification of address is because there is the new definition, or the new clarification of the definition of citizen in the charter. It would require verification of address. And anybody can get up and speak and give an address. If it's found out that they give a fake address or their address that they give when they're speaking as a citizen is outside the county, and upon review of the minutes, that's determined to be the case, then they would still be welcome to speak at the two minutes at the beginning of the meeting on any of those issues that they're allowed to speak on. But before they could speak again on the citizen comments on the charter provisions, they would have to show a registered, or something like that, that shows they're a resident of the city of Florisville. And that's pretty much the overview. If anybody has any questions or anything about the legal issues in here, I'll be happy to take them.
Counsel, any questions? On amended directive number four?
No, the only thing I was going to say, Madam Mayor, because of the time, could we table the next two or three items?
Well, can we finish this one?
Sure.
You didn't mean including this one, did you?
I was going to say the next two or three.
That's what you did, so...
Whatever your... Whatever you think.
There's eight items after this one. Is that what you meant?
I said the next two or three. Item F was sponsored by Councilman Valdez. I'll just say the ones that have my name and your name on them.
Including this one?
Whatever. That's just my opinion.
I would like to complete this one, if that's okay. We have citizen comments on number C, directive number four.
Just one thing. My name is Mary Ellen Teaken. And I would like to ask you a question. How many of you are opposed to voter ID? And how many of you are opposed to voter ID? You think about that, and you think about, what in the heck are you doing asking us to provide our ID at the door before we can speak to you that we elect? I think that is the most ridiculous, egregious recommendation that's come from you guys. I'm just appalled.
I don't think that's the intent, Ms. Teaken. I think the intent is, at the beginning of the meeting, for us to have a community input for everybody's sake. But when it comes to agenda items, it's limited to the citizens of Florisville. I mean, am I correct in that, Ms. Rov?
That is the intent of the...
That's the intent.
Well, that may be the intent, but I don't believe that that's what really is going to happen. I think what will happen is there will be an oppression coming from this council that will keep people... Let me, may I finish?
Please.
That will keep people from speaking because she will have the right to say who does and who does not have the right. And whether it's she or whether it's another person sitting in that chair eventually who is elected, then that person may or may not have the same viewpoints on how things go when somebody, when these points come up. I'm sorry. I just think this is terribly egregious and should not be put into this directive.
Thank you, Ms. Teaken. Do we have another speaker? Other comment?
Jim Lohan. I won't be the motionless. I don't want less. I've been coming to these meetings maybe for three years, and I have not seen a problem with citizen comment being abused by the folks that are out here talking. The ordinance is not a real problem for me. What I see as a problem here is the perception. All of a sudden, we've got all these rules about what citizens can do or can't do or say or can't say or when or whatnot. It gives a really bad perception of you as a council by trying to keep citizen comment down and not have to listen to them. It's such a perceptual issue. Think about it. Ordinance is okay.
Thank you. Another comment?
Yes. Joanne Yuhas, Wilson County. If I can correct counsel, Councilman Tejada, under verification of address, see what it says is, "All those who sign up to speak in the general citizen comments period or who speak as citizens prior to a vote pursuant to the city charter are testing that the address listed or announced is his or her domicile for all legal purposes." So it does mention both. What I'd like to say is, I have spoken at our Capitol during legislative procedures. Never did I have to give my address. I did not have to show my identification. Also, a personal experience in which the review for city manager Henrietta Turner was done, and it was a little bit contentious. We went from a 90% to a 20%. I spoke out about the difference in, the blatant difference in the assessment of her performance. It was mentioned then by Mayor Castillo that I did not live in Florisville. And I knew from that period of time that it would be on the agenda to try to limit our speech. I will also share with you where I live. The next morning, and we were the only house in that particular subdivision that experienced vandalism. Not saying it's a coincidence, don't know, but it's interesting. We were the only one that experienced vandalism. So I caution you on asking people to share verbally their address just for their own privacy. Thank you.
Another comment?
Fred Gonzalez, and I live in Florisville. According to our charter, section 307, "All powers of the city and the determination of all matters of policy shall be vested in the city council." Yet you cannot legally serve on it unless you are a resident of Florisville. Section 302. Is that being unneighborly? No. Those are the requirements of local self-government. Section 503 says, "The council shall be composed of five members elected by the voters of the city." The mayor shall also be elected by the voters of the city. To legally vote in such election, you must be a resident of Florisville. Is that being unneighborly? No. No. Those are the requirements of local self-government. Also, section seven of the Charter requires that any legislation taken through initiative or referendum can only begin with registered Florisville voters. Is that being unneighborly? Again, no. Those are the requirements of local self-government. The common denominator here is the ballot box. Thus, common sense should tell us, you should not be able to do through this podium what you cannot do through the ballot box. Here, I'm referring to influencing actions that directly affect only the citizens of Florisville, CNA items. Is that being unneighborly? No. Those are the provisions of local self-government that assure those being governed of what is inherently theirs alone, a voice on actions that directly affect them. And I might add, this is not a change, but a clarification and an enforcement of what was always there. I humbly but strongly ask that you vote for each passage. Now, let me say this aside from that. Addresses, I think I agree with some of the people. I wouldn't request that, but they do have to be residents of Florisville. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Other comments?
Pete Yuhas again. I have a quick question about how is the determination going to be when there are council initiatives that affect the residents outside the city? How is that going to be determined? Who's going to announce that, that when we can speak and when we cannot speak?
It'll be, if it's clearly, directly impacted, then you'll be able to get up. If it's not, then it's set up for the mayor's, as the presiding officer, for determination.
This reminds me of the Weimar Republic in nineteen thirty-three, but those that don't know what that means, look it up. One thing I do want to say real quick is that this probably won't make a big difference, but before you vote, consider one thing. I did a quick rundown of the expenses that I have in my home. I spent roughly twelve to fifteen hundred dollars in sales taxes in this city a year. If this passes, I will make it my personal vendetta that I will initiate a movement to get non-residents to not spend their tax dollars in this city. And that may not seem like much, but if I get, let's say, twenty-five people to do that, that's around thirty thousand dollars. That's one police car. You get fifty, that's sixty thousand dollars. That's some heavy equipment. So consider all this before you make that movement. Thank you.
Madam, Castillo, I yield my time to Fred Gonzalez.
I don't need it anymore.
Oh, you don't need it anymore? Okay.
He was fine.
Okay. Then I want to say a piece. I don't want anyone from the county telling me, the citizens, what to do, because we pay taxes, we vote here, they cannot come and vote in the city elections, so they do not have...
Can you state your name, please, for the...
Oh, Sarita Jimenez. I've lived here all my life, and I come from a long line of people that have helped the city of Florisville to be what it is. They did way back to eighteen ninety-three, when my grandfather was sheriff of Wilson County.
Thank you, Ms. Jimenez.
Elaine Kaloji, Florisville. I would just like to point out, we're talking about people who pay taxes and people who are allowed to vote in city elections. How many people own businesses in the city of Florisville and do not live in the city of Florisville? Do they not deserve a say in what goes on? And according to this, it will be entirely up to your discretion, and I think that that would pose a problem. Thank you.
I need a clarification. I'll take care of my ninety-year-old mother, okay? Let's say that I move to San Antonio. My mother cannot represent herself. Now, would I be unable to represent her if she has an issue with the city issue? Would it be entirely up to you to say yes or no? But I'll be representing my mother, although I wouldn't have lived here if I moved?
Yes. If you're no longer a resident of Florisville...
It would be up to her.
Correct.
All right, that's clarification. Another thing, what about individuals that vote, that don't live here, but they're still registered in another parish or house, or whatever, but you know they don't live here? They just keep the residency or registration here. When time to vote, they just get to come vote. I mean, that's, we all know that. So, you know, you just remove Mr. Merrill because of that. But to me, that's the same issue. You don't live here, but you're registered, you've been living somewhere else for five years, but you're registered in a parish name. It's the same thing.
That's technically...
Well, yeah. So you all know it. You vote in.
Monica Flores, nine twenty-fourth Street, Florisville. Madam Castillo and Councilwoman, I would just like to request that you are leaders and you are a city council. Please give it some very serious consideration, the decision you have before you, to allow or not allow people to give input. We understand they cannot vote, but we have many citizens that do have businesses here that may live with, outside of the city. We work really hard, all of you have in the past, in some capacity, to bring people to this town, to this county, tourism. We speak about it all the time. We want something good for our area, and we keep trying to promote it, but by prohibiting people to just have a say, not vote, just have a say, is not giving a very promising message out to the public and to these folks. And they do participate. They come here, we beg them to be a part of support for downtown Florisville and all around, and yet we're saying, but I'm going to make the decision whether you speak or not, or we're saying you cannot speak. A lot of these people purchase and pay sales tax big time, and there are a lot that have even been involved on your committees. And you've asked for their donations, you've asked for their volunteerism, and yet you're telling them, I'm sorry, you really can't be a part and have a say. So please, I encourage you, and I really hope that you will give that some consideration. We have a great city, we have a great town, county. Let's keep promoting it for the positive, and let's try and pull things together. And just, it doesn't really take a lot of effort to just sit and listen a little bit to what some people have to share with you. And I think it would go a long ways if you would consider that. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Mr. Hug, would you clarify the difference between someone who can and cannot speak regarding CNAs that affect the city?
The ones regarding CNAs that affect the city. So in the general comment, if it affects the city exclusively and doesn't have any direct bearing on individuals in the county, then it would be here. Issues of that, like we talked about, would be purchase of a new police car, something where the police jurisdiction is limited to the city limits of Florisville, so that only has to pay directly on residents. Indirectly, it may affect residents of the county, because if there's a mutual aid agreement and they request to go out there, but it's not a direct impact, right, on its face. Anything that has a county-wide, like with the, when we were doing the emergency, the FEMA issues there, because it does have an impact on the area, that would be something that residents of the county would be able to do, because spatially, it impacts everybody in the area. Those are just some of the clear delineation ones. There are issues that kind of become a little gray area. I can't think of any off the top of my head right now, but I'm sure they'll come up rather often, and that's why we just need somebody to do it, and we can't have a CNA item for every citizen comment to get a full vote in the council. So we have to delineate one person that can be that as presiding officer, the office of mayor, to be the most logical.
If there's any way you can clarify, Mr. Hug, where we say community input allows for county residents or anybody outside the city limits to comment, is there some confusion there? Because I believe the intent was, community input involve anybody to come and speak. The action items would be more related to people who actually live in the city.
Really, the only way to provide full delineation there is, anybody can speak for two minutes on anything they want at the beginning, and only citizens could speak on the minute at each CNA item.
Well, that's what I thought the intent was.
Oh, it was related, I thought that they could only speak regarding CNA items even in the general comments. Residents of the county in the two minutes at the beginning couldn't speak on CNA items even in the general comments.
That's the way it's written.
Right. If the council wants to change that, when they vote to adopt this, we can make that change and just make it so anybody can speak on any topic in the first two minutes, and then for the CNA items, as they come up on the agenda, that's limited to citizens. That's possible to accomplish as well.
Want to make any changes?
I think changes need to be made. I mean, we try to keep the open lines of communication with the residents. You know, you see the same residents that show up at these meetings, and there's certain reasons why. Individuals feel that if they come, their voices aren't heard, or we're not listening, and we're going to do what we want to do. So, I mean, if these individuals, whether from the city or the county, keep coming to attend our meetings, they're making their input, that's all it is, is input. We still have the right to make the decision up here as councilmen, or councilwoman, and as mayor. So to deter them from making any type of input, I disagree with. I mean, they're making, you know, the comments for a minute or two minutes. I mean, I think we have to keep the open lines of communication open. So is it your recommendation?
I have to agree too. If you're a business owner, even if you live outside the county, I think you should have say so, anything involved. I think we just have to, like, make the little change in that, and I think I can do it.
Why don't we table it? I think you have the general idea what the council is looking at. If we can change that, maybe looking at it in January, can we do that? I'd like the motion we table for now.
You have a motion to table, amended council directive number four, relating to citizen comment periods at city council. Do I have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Another comment? Okay. Are we ready for the question? We've had enough comments, right? Okay. Yes, ma'am?
It's not a comment, it's just a suggestion. If besides businesses, you could include churches?
Thank you, that's a good suggestion. Okay. Mr. Hug, would you...
Well, I say we just keep the line open. I mean, I don't think we have to distinguish, you know, business member or anything. I mean, you may have a potential person wanting to move to Florisville, they're coming to our meetings to see, you know, what the city's doing. I don't think we should limit it to anybody. If they come to this meeting and they have something to say, let's just hear them. It's their time. Except anybody from Pleasant.
Okay, so we have a motion to table. All those in favor, raise your right arm. All opposed? Madam Secretary?
Four.
Zero. Motion carries to table.
Mayor, may I humbly request for you to go ahead and move the line item for the depository contract, because we have two people here that are, have to travel to San Antonio and Austin, and it's already getting late.
Okay, let me... Yes, we'll go about, we got our right, counsel.
Why don't we just table item D?
Okay, you ready? May I have a motion to table item D?
I so move.
I second.
All in favor?
I can either second.
I second.
Okay, let's move to item F.
Well, E, I'll make a motion and we'll table it out when I have to.
All right. Table item E, regarding proposed council directive number nine. Do I have a second? All in favor? Raise your... All opposed? Madam Secretary?
If we could put this on, we could have any more meetings in December, no, right?
No, it's in January.
January, then.
May I ask a question? Because the four A and four B vacancies, they may not be four.
They may not be what?
All four. So wouldn't it be necessary, go ahead and appoint her?
Those will be at the end of the meeting.
We'll give... You're not, you're not... We're moving now. No, we're turning now. M, okay, can we wait on yours? No, no, I mean, can we skip yours and go ahead and do Ms. Patterson? We'll come back to it. Okay? All right, the next one is item G, CNA to review bids for bank depository and award contract.
Madam Mayor and counsel, I appreciate you moving it up, it is getting late, and I will try to be very brief so that I don't extend your time any longer for your attendance this evening also. We're talking about the evaluation of proposals for banking services. Under state law, of course, every five years, maximum five years, you must go out for bid on banking services as a city. We went out with proposals for the city and got, on a request for proposal, got two proposals back from SunTrust Bank and from Wells Fargo Bank, both here in Florisville. And when we looked at the proposals, we were really looking at it in four different ways. First of all, we went through and looked very carefully at all the services that were available from both of the banks. Then we looked at the fee structure for the banks. We looked at, thirdly, what the earnings potential is at the bank, and then brought all of those factors together to try to make the best possible decision for what bank would be best for you. I think the major difference between these two banks really is the services. Your incumbent bank is Wells Fargo, and many of the services that were proposed by SunTrust would not even be in place yet. The list of proposals went out, the IOPs went out in June, and SunTrust was given the benefit of the doubt on what services and what systems they would have up at the beginning of 2016. I just pulled out a few of the major things that differentiate these two banks. Both of them have good basic structure, both of them are sound credit quality for the banks. Wells Fargo has the ability to sweep funds, and this is going to become more and more important as the rates go up, as we hope they will, starting next week. One of the other major things on the differentiation on account structure is that Wells Fargo is not going to charge you on the account analysis for interest that's earned. South Trust does. What that means is, you have a checking account, and you earn interest at that checking account. That interest, if you earned five hundred dollars interest, then you would bring it in as a fee to be paid for compensating balance as five hundred dollars additional fees. So you can imagine that the more you use and the more money that you have in the bank, the higher the fees are going to be in South Trust. The automation is clearly, it wasn't known totally what the South Trust automation was going to look like. The city is currently using Wells Fargo, they know those systems, they're very well-developed and very technologically advanced. There's a lot more on the automation and the customization reports that are available through Wells Fargo. The deposit, in the deposit area, one of the ways that you can more efficiently and effectively get money into the bank as quickly as possible is called remote deposit, scanning the checks here and moving it in. Both of the banks have that, but again, the difference is that you have to have the latest scan that you can do here. For South Trust, it's three o'clock in the afternoon versus nine o'clock at night with Wells Fargo. For the online systems, again, with wires and internal transfers, much more flexibility on Wells Fargo. And, you know, of course, it sounds like a broken record, but Wells Fargo, being a national bank, they have a larger platform, they have a larger footprint, and so they've spent a lot more money on their tech level. One of the things I think is really critical for you for safety is the ACH, or the Automated Clearinghouse function, that is moving, that all cities and all public entities and corporations are moving to using a much, a better guarantee through the ACH system. The filters and blocks, the protections, the controls you can put on those accounts at Wells Fargo, much, much stronger than South Trust. you can put on those accounts at Wells Fargo, much, much stronger than South Trust. So you can see, just with those factors, how important the difference is in the services that are available from these two banks. So when we came down to actually coming down to an objective service rating, we had two hundred and eighty-eight points for South Trust, three hundred and ninety-one for Wells Fargo. So quite a difference in the services that were available from the two banks. When you look at the banking costs, if you look at it just on its surface, it looks very much like there's a little bit of difference. It's a little bit less expensive to go to South Trust, but of course, you're not getting the level of service that you did. Also, you have to look at the fact that every time you set up a new account, as for instance, you just did with your new USDA account, three accounts setting up quickly, each time you do that, it's additional three hundred dollars. The interest being applied, the interest that you earn being applied as a fee to you, that adds into it. So basically, when you start looking down the fee level, you're making those two very, very similar. And then the final part of the puzzle is the earnings rates that you can get. And the earnings credit rate is a very critical rate for you. That's the rate you earn that is going to generate the interest to pay your banking fees. And at Wells Fargo, it's a point three at this point in time, point three at South Trust, a point one. So that's a considerable difference, and a difference that's going to make a lot of difference as the rates go up. So the recommendation is that you award the banking services contract to Wells Fargo, and I'd be glad to answer any other questions.
We've done visits with Wells Fargo for how long?
Five years, because it's been a five-year contract you're going into.
I mean, much longer than that, I'm sure.
Well, the last depository contract was done in 2013. So since then, for sure, we have Wells Fargo.
Madam Mayor, if you can ask for citizens' input, then I'll be ready to make a motion.
Yes, please. Citizens' input.